Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Hillsborough Town Board of Commissioners to discuss and take action on a response to tropical storm Charlene. I want to acknowledge the unusual and unfortunate circumstances that Hillsborough is in for the past 10 days regarding the storm. We're still in a state of emergency, but we have transitioned from the emergency response mode into a recovery mode. A declaration of disaster is in progress, and that's the county's work at this point. Stack will update us tonight on the town's response and the areas of the town that were most impacted by the storm, including the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, and our public works facility. I want to acknowledge the impact on our residents, many of whom are here, and I know personally we're impacted by the storm, our businesses who are also here impacted by the storm, and also the impact to the town staff who have been working tremendously hard for 10 days on our response to this storm. So tonight is the first meeting. We usually, as I said earlier, we don't meet in July, so this is a special meeting. It has a very focused agenda on approving financial requirements to, for us to meet response to the storms. We have to do that. And then I'm going to ask the town manager, assistant town manager, to give us various updates on where things are regarding our response. And then at the end, I think we'd like to entertain any questions the audience might have. Starting with residents and businesses, I know there are multiple media outlets here as well, but I want to hear primarily from our residents if you have any questions about where things are what can be done here and where do I go to get resources for these things? So that said, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I have. Can you approve the agenda that's presented?
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Evelyn. All in favor? Any of first. Okay, so the first thing on our regular agenda is appropriation of funds for emergency vehicle replacements and other costs associated with tropical storms on tall and feedback from the board of commissioners on those instances. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For commissioners, let me get our slides pulled up here. Thank you. So. There we go. We're talking about a few things tonight. We'll lead off with a discussion of vehicle and equipment replacements. That's the main purpose for the meeting this evening is to appropriate funds for that. We'll talk about some of the other planned recovery expenses that will be coming to you in the future and then discuss where we are in an initial after-action review. And I think the town manager has some updates on staffs of county resources and other things that are available to the community. First, just to share her context, some of the damage. So this is a shot from the morning of the storm. So this is Monday, the 7th. And this is our public works yard. This is what folks showed up to work and found many of our vehicles underwater. This is a photo on the left from the night before, taken by Hillsborough Police Department. This is the railroad trestle where Eno and Gold Mill intersect. And so looking straight ahead of you is the entrance to Kingle Park. The image on the right is our floating dock, our famous floating dock from King's Highway Park floating down the Eno River. This happened several times to that dock. These are, this image on the left is from water and silt damage inside the Public Works Operations Facility. You can see the mud and the muck left behind in the facility. Water in that facility reached over six feet high. I'm sorry, skip one. This image on the right, if, for those of you who have been to the wastewater treatment plant and been to the river pumping station, this is normally well above the river, and you can see the level of the river is at the top of the pumping station. So this was a significant height of water. These are some images of the damage on the Riverwalk Trail. I do have some updates this evening on the status of the trail. You can see missing eight rails. You see bridges underwater. On the right, you can see this is the underpass leading to Gold Park. Underneath the railroad trestle, you can see there was a rock slide there. And then the final two images I was around tonight, this image on the left, this is the Gold Park B Hotel. It was washed out of the park, carried down the river, and deposited on one of the boardwalks underneath the Riverwalk. The image on the right is what was the Hillsborough Community Garden. Those of you who are familiar, the town has worked with them over the past couple of years on updating our floodplain prevention ordinance to make sure that they had things within the floodplain that were able to, you know, wash away in a flood, so they didn't cause greater damage. It's unfortunate what happened, but that's the reason we went through this floodplain prevention project with them. They are in a floodplone area. And so there could have been greater damage resulting if they had bigger, bulkier items there that would have been washed down into the river, people's homes, things like that. And so that's what the garden looks like now. So in terms of our vehicles, so this has been a bit of a moving target. The list started out higher. David Wisely, our fleet manager is here. They, they rocked last week trying to get as many vehicles as possible back into service. As of yesterday, we have 10 vehicles that are permanently out of service, down from 14. So you can see here on the left side, the categories of vehicles. Overall, we're down to about two-thirds strength in our public works vehicles. But you can see it's not evenly distributed. On solid waste, we luckily had two vehicles that were up at the fleet facility out of the floodwaters. And so we were able to carry on trash service as normal last week. But you can see dump trucks, only one out of three is working. Leaf trucks were stored at another facility, and so thankfully, those are, those are really expensive pieces of equipment we do not have to replace. Brush trucks, this is where our big loss is. We lost both of our operational brush trucks, and that really hampered our initial debris management response. We thankfully received a loan unit from Durham County through mutual aid, and we were able to rent the vehicle that took several days to get here. And so we currently have two operating vehicles, but that is our largest need in terms of recovery. On the right, you can see all of the public works assets. The ones in green are currently operational. The ones in yellow are still being evaluated by fleet to see if they can be restored. And the ones that have a red status are vehicles that are no longer operational. We have in the middle column, the replacement cost, so about 1.6, 1.7 million in replacement cost for those vehicles. And then the last column is the insured value. If we're able to recover the full insured value, plus or minus our deductibles on those vehicles, that is what we would recover. These costs do not include tax tag and title, outfit of the vehicles. And once we receive them, we put lights and decals on them. And then several of these vehicles have small equipment that goes with them, things like tampers, chainsaws, and things like that, that were also lost to floodwater. So when we get to the budget spreadsheet, you'll see those costs factor in as well. So it's the same information from the previous slide in terms of the trucks to be replaced. We've had budgeted $385,000 in the general fund this year for vehicle replacement, and that was for a garbage truck. And we have $252,000 in the FY27 budget. As the board knows, we budget on a three-year plan, and so one of the strategies to mitigate the cost is to look at what is already in that three-year plan and what can we shuffle so that the bottom line impact of the fund balance is minimized? So those are the resources that we have in the budget. We maintain a vehicle and equipment replacement fund so that we have sort of a smooth replacement cost year over year. So we have about $400,000 between now and next year available in that fund. So those are the resources that we can allocate now. You can see down below the cost of the, the replacement vehicles, plus those other items I mentioned, tax tag, title, outfit, and equipping. So the total loss and need to replace is around $2.3 million for the lost vehicles and equipment. We back out the budget that we have available up above. We need a fund balance appropriation of a little over a million dollars tonight to be able to move forward with these replacements. There is potential insurance recovery. And so as those funds are received, they would be put back into fund balance. So the order of operations is we appropriate funds tonight, begin to purchase the vehicles as soon as this week. And then as we work with the league on our insurance recovery, whatever funds come back in, go back into fund balance to minimize that impact. Down below, we have some scenarios of whether or not we get full insurance recovery, partial insurance recovery, or limited insurance recovery. One of the big factors that we're still working through is what was our level of insurance for the floodplain? These vehicles were parked partially in a floodplain. There's some question over what will actually be covered under insurance. And so that's why we're showing you those scenarios of we may not get all the recovery for the vehicles that we need to replace. So what we have here in the middle column, this is our three-year financial plan as adopted by the board last month. So you can see the fund balance level for FY26, the year we're in now. We were projected to end the year with about 13.5 million or around 75% fund balance. Tracking through to the end of FY28, about 11.3 million or just under 60% fund balance. The impact of making this appropriation now, again, assuming no insurance recovery, so these numbers are likely to be low, would decrease our available fund balance in the current year to 12.4 million or around 62% and then trailing out through FY28 to just over 10 million or 52%. Those seem like high numbers, but with us, for a small town like us, we try to keep a fairly healthy fund balance. And as we've seen from this event, we talked a lot about in the budget, the impacts of Hurricane Helene on western North Carolina. We want to keep that fund balance number high so that in emergency situations like this, we have the resources available. Aside from the vehicles and equipment, those are our most pressing needs to address now. We have some medium and long-term recovery expenses that we'll be planning to bring forward to you all. So the near-term expenses, so public works operations, we already have the NC86 facility under construction. We're about three weeks out from not being able to use that facility. That's, that's currently where we're housing public works and fleet operations. In about three weeks, we need to find them somewhere to go for the next 12 months while that construction isn't brought to us. Repairs to Gold, Gold Park and Riverwalk. Those were some of our more damaged facilities outside of our utilities, and I'll have some updates for you all on assessments for that. We have ongoing expenses for bypass pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. That's what's currently keeping sanitary sewer overflows to a minimal level, and also long-term repairs to the river pumping section. As we're going through and doing damage assessments, and as fleet is able to put vehicles back into service, we know there are, there is unexpected lingering damage. So one of the things that we, one of the exercises we went through in planning the fleet replacement is trying to leave some flexibility and replacing vehicles that may, may not be dead now, but we know there's gremlins or there's something that is going to happen to them because of the water damage. Looking at longer term, 12 months and beyond, the Adrian Thompson facility, we had planned to go to bid in January on improvements to that facility. This, this event has led to us to take a pause and reexamine what that investment looks like. Do we need to go back and raise the floor levels? Do we need to look at some other flood mitigation strategies at that facility before we pull the trigger on an expensive renovation? Lastly, in response to this event, we are going through and examining other vulnerable infrastructure and what other potential flood mitigation strategies we need to plan for. I'm going to stop there, and we'll come back to the after-action review and just throw a few updates from the information you all have already received. So as of today, our report from our structural engineers at the Riverwalk Bridges all appear to be structurally stable, which is good. That was, that was, we were afraid that was going to be a very large expense. So we have about $12,000 of repair work to decking and handrails that need to go forward, and we're lining up contractors for that now. The surface trails have all been cleared and all the trail surfaces have been pressure washed. So all the mud, the muck, the tree debris has been cleared. Sections of the trail between Riverwalk, River Park and Gold Park can reopen once those decking and handrail repairs are made. So that sort of middle section of the trail will be the first to reopen, hopefully in the next few weeks. The connection from Calvin Street to Gold Park will remain closed due to that rock damage I showed you all pictures of until we have a chance to get in and get that rock out of there and assess that section. The section of trail that the town owns between River Park and Elizabeth Brady can reopen once we stabilize the wastewater treatment plant and understand the risk of future sanitary sewer overflows. The State Park section between River Park and Elizabeth Brady, so where the, where the trail transitions from town ownership over to the State Park section will remain closed. They have some bridge repairs and stream bank stabilization to do on their property for that section to reopen. In Gold Park, the restrooms have been cleaned and sanitized and renovations are being planned. One of the things we're looking at with that is replacing the materials that are in there with a more water-resistant and easier to clean and maintain material. While we're going in, we want to go ahead and make some improvements to the resiliency of, of that facility. We have fencing contractors lined up for repairs to the privacy fence, the fence along the river and the dog park fence on the dog park area. We'll likely wait, we'll stabilize the broken pieces of fence, but wait to go back in and do full repairs and replace all the mulch until the heavy rain season is over. Annually, we do, we do a mulch refresh in the fall to that facility. And so that's our typical timeline for that. The damage to the playground and the subbase is still being evaluated, so the park closure is likely to last several more weeks as those items are worked on. Stormwater assessments around town have, have been ongoing. We found no significant issues with privately-owned stormwater control measures. So these are typically community-owned retention ponds, retention areas. We have found limited private drainage issues outside of the river corridor with the exception of one significant failure on King Street, which was a culvert failure underneath an NCBOT street that we're working on. The planted bio-retentionary areas along the Riverwalk, King's Highway, and in Gold Park sustained minor damage that we can repair at house. Ode Street Green Infrastructure and Kate's Creek Park, from a stormwater and erosion control perspective, are both okay. Our staff will be meeting with representatives at the mine this week to assess their damage. And we've started looking at plans for longer-term mitigation projects around the Gold Park and, you know, Mountain Road in the river for a stormwater project. I mentioned before, we are evaluating additional flood mitigation options at Adrian Thompson, even the water treatment plant. And we have a meeting on Tuesday next week to start evaluating sites for the public works. So so those are the updates we have at this time. I'll take any more questions on the budget appropriations and move to town manager updates.
Thank you, Matt. That was a very detailed report. Appreciate all the, the work that has gone into even making that report. So thank you very much. So let's start with any questions about the finances involved. Evelyn, do you have any detailed questions about the estimated cost that we're being asked to approve tonight?
And that's the branch. What do you, I think is, what would you expect for it not to be? It can be better. And if we get some, we can get some insurance and get some aid. Some ways that would be nice, but it is, it is what it is. And we, and we can take care of it, Eric, but.
It's on you, Eric. Thank you, Evelyn. Megan, do you have any questions about the, the financial part?
Matt, you're, you've got it up there, right? Just something I had here. The, you said a little over a million dollars. Is that the, the column FY26 right there? That's the one that you're looking to, not the 1.3.
Correct. So the 233,000 would be appropriated in next year's budget. So the 1.06 million is what would be appropriated tonight for the vehicles. The item that's in your packet, the, the budget adjustment item includes the vehicles, but also includes a number of other emergency-related items. So as we've been going through and making repairs, the finance and budget team set up some force accounts where we could charge things related to repairs. And so the number for the budget appropriations section is higher than that. The million dollars is what's related to the vehicles.
Okay. And that's, that was my expression. So it's not like the stuff that you mentioned in the vehicles, like the chainsaws or whatever might else be in there, but it does include tax title and decals and that kind of thing?
Correct. So that 1.06 million portion of the budget adjustment, that covers everything above for FY26. And then the additional costs that are in the budget adjustment are related to various repairs that have been authorized already, things like, you know, buying water and food and things like that over the storm response.
You say then if we approve this, you would order this week, but I'm sure they're not going to show up next week. So.
No, so part of, part of our exercise in planning the replacement was identifying, one, what vehicles we can get our hands on quickly. In your agenda packet, you have a copy of the exercise we went through and planning the vehicle replacement. We did a, a very simple version of a pre-mortem exercise of looking ahead, figuring out, okay, how did we get this wrong? And then trying to backtrack from there, whether there's supply chain issues, insurance recovery issues, or things like that. And so we'll prioritize vehicles we can get quickly that meet the needs. And so we have identified vehicles that are on cooperative purchase contracts that we can legally buy off of quickly and that are available in the area. So some of these will get here soon. Some of them will take a little while to get here.
Oh, do I just add in one, one of the things that everybody knows about equipment, heavy equipment is like there are very long delays and some of the equipment and David can chime in. I can't remember, like someone, we've had to wait like a year and a half for a garbage truck. It just happened to be that a truck that's usable for us is available now. And there are enough of them trucks that are available that are similar, not identical to what we're doing that are available. So a couple of key pieces of equipment. We're very lucky. And one of the reasons we wanted to do an evaluation quickly and come to the board quickly is if we wait, those vehicles may be gone, and then we may be waiting a year or longer for those and being a big bind. So we've been fortunate. I'm sure there's other equipment we're going to have to wait on longer to get.
Or maybe, like up at the top, it says, I'm just going to get the first one as an example. I've got garbage truck written down there for 400,000. Now, this vehicle that you're going to purchase, knowing that a garbage truck takes so long, is it going to be? I guess, looking for this, something that can replace it. Maybe it's not exactly a garbage truck, or are we going to pour exactly placement?
So that's one that like, if you all approve the budget tonight or tomorrow, because there's, there is a chassis and body available nearby that we can get our hands on in a few weeks. We have two operational garbage trucks right now. One of them had already been planned for surplus this year. So we essentially have one new garbage truck and one very old one that we were about to get rid of. And so right now, we're okay from a redundancy standpoint. The, the risk is we need one truck operational every day to run the routes. If the one that's older fails, we, we will have a lot of redundancy. And so that's the very first vehicle order is that, that garbage truck that's available now.
And then in the meantime, this might be in the other appropriations is that we're renting and borrowing other vehicles. Is that going to show up already? Or is that going to be something we're going to charge as we go until these replacements come?
So Emily is online. She may be able to chime in, but some of that rental expense should be included in what you're appropriating tonight, I think, and those additional expenses.
I think that's all I got right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Megan. You've asked two of my, two questions. So thank you. I don't have any additional questions anymore.
I, I don't actually have any additional questions either, Megan. Megan asked some of the same ones that I had. This, I think this is pretty self-explan, but this will replace all of our vehicles that will basically that damage from, from the storm.
Between this year and next year, the priority on this year is the, the frontline equipment. And then next year, we would move back into replacing spares that have been put back in the service. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Megan.
There, there's more than 10 trucks up there, though, isn't there?
Yes, so 10 were lost. The, the two that are in FY27, those, as I said, are spares that were put back in the service. So we were planning to replace those anyway. So we've shifted that out to next year to work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think what I'd like to at this point is to go ahead and entertain a motion, push your views as raised.
Kathleen and.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, we have two commissioners who are remote, and I apologize. So let's see, Matt, are you?
Yes, yes, I can. And, and thank you, Mayor Bell. And thank you for the presentation, Matt. I think it was very thorough. And I apologize for not being in town. Of course, weather being what it is, mother nature doesn't ask us when to have emergencies. And, and so I appreciate the flexibility and being able to zoom in. I do have a question, Matt, and I know these are, I believe, mostly general fund allocations, but I am curious in particular around the water purchases from the city of Durham. And I know we're being asked for this because there's urgency. Hopefully, we can get things in play. I know it took us a long time to order a replacement police vehicles, but I was kind of curious just financially how things looked, and this might be an Emily question, as it related to the, the bulk water purchases that we made from the city of Durham during the boil water advisory and, and things being taken offline.
So I'll answer the first part about the vehicles and then Emily or Eric can chime in about the water purchases. We do have a, we do have an approximate figure for that. I just don't know it off the top of my head. On the vehicles and equipment, we have identified two vehicles that belong to the water sewer fund that sustained some water damage. They are currently running. And so the thought is that those vehicles, because there are only two of them and they're relatively low dollar compared to the public works vehicles, those could be replaced as part of the normal budget process. There are also a number of pieces of equipment that are currently being evaluated, things like plasma welders and things like that that were damaged on the yard that fleet is still evaluating. So in Waters who are fun, there's some smaller dollar amounts, but they're not the critical nature of the public works vehicles.
Yeah, I'm trying to bring up the, the dollar amount for the Durham water purchase. And if I recall correctly, it was about 7 million gallons, which I'm going to throw out, throw out a number. I'm going to say it was probably less than $50,000. It used to be that we had a permanent line item because we bought water from Durham every single year. It, so the bulk water purchases is like way less than you would expect, you know, for like basically a, this is six, six-day period or so, but I'll, I'll follow up if I can find that number here.
And I, if you don't have the number on hand, I think that's fine, Eric. I was, I was curious along those lines. You know, 7 million gallons financially sounds pretty good, in particular because I believe we use a lot more than that in a comparable period. So it sounds like people took to heart the conservation requests.
Yes, that tracks with what Utilities Director Marie Samowitz reported.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions on this item.
The estimate of the water use was the, the 7.5 million gallons, if you're interested, it was over 1 million cubic feet. That's how Durham does it. It's about $26,000 for seven and a half million gallons. Given our situation, that's a bargain. And I'm very, very grateful for everybody in the city of Durham who worked so rapidly to help us out during that time.
Yes, and I made sure to thank Mayor Williams when I was able to talk with him and, and just say, my gosh, this is such a lifeline. And I'm glad we have that, that connection. So thank you. Those are all my questions on this item.
Thank you, Matt. Kathleen?
Thank you. Pretty straightforward here. I have to echo the, the job well done. I'm glad to see that you guys went into a pre-mortem exercise. One of the things to give you some context of the importance of the Ford Motor Company did a risk assessment a year before Katrina hit on the, they wanted to see the impact of high gas prices. On the uh, they wanted to see the impact of high gas prices on their bottom line. Because they did a risk assessment, they only did, you know, uh like fifty cents uh. Uh higher per gallon. Needless to say, when um. Gas prices exceeded to higher by two dollars plus, that risk assessment uh was was rendered. Worthless, whereas that pre-mortem. Real it bypasses the anchoring bias and allows you to go straight to that failed state outright. Um and had they done that, would have been able to be prepared. So all of that to say, I'm really excited that you guys uh. Went ahead and engaged in a pre-mortem. Um and I'm I am amazed at the work that has been done. And just how much we've done and the preparation that we've had in place, and that's huge kudos to everyone. Um so much of the planning that's been done. It is despite the damage, it could have been far, far, far worse if we had not had that kind of planning in place. The only question I do have is going back to the insurance. I know that there was some concern. Um and this is probably for Eric about being in the floodplain. Are we covered? Are towns covered with flood insurance or any kind of. Coverage in cases like this where, you know, uh we're not the only town that utilizes floodplain for critical infrastructure. So so do our policies account for that? Does the state cover that kind of thing?
Well, uh not not the state, but as far as insurance goes, Carboro is having the same question as we. We do because they're covered by the league. Uh Matt uh can chime in. As far as because the the floodplain down there is very, it winds around. Some of our vehicles were within the hundred year floodplain. Uh some of them were out of the five hundred year, and that is a question that the league is answering right now, and we don't know. So we've been able to show floodplain maps, show where our vehicles were, and they're they're making that assessment. And Carboro is probably doing the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, I know we're not the only ones for sure. Um but uh. Really want to thank everyone for it's, everyone is just um the extraordinary efforts. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Is there any more questions before we proceed to um authorize the expenditure? We'll have other things to say on on this topic, but we'd like to get that out of the way. Okay, is there a motion to authorize one million sixty seven thousand dollar? Five hundred twenty dollars, one million sixty seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
That's not the full number for the appropriation. That's just for the vehicles. There is an item in your packet on the full appropriation. If you all um can just take a motion to authorize the budget.
And I don't have that in front of me.
The budget amendment that's included in the packet. And hold it up here. So it looks like the total uh budget amount, uh budget amount in your packet is. One million one hundred and twenty three thousand six hundred and sixteen. Emily, please chime in if that's not the right number.
Matt, I think we're asking them just to um approve the budget amendments that were included in the packet, not like a specific number. Because there's there are also amendments transferring money between lines and between budget units. So it's not just a straight fund balance appropriation that's in the packet.
Uh thank you, Anna. So uh, Mr. Mayor, your normal practice is to move for adoption of the budget amendments that are included in the packet to avoid that specific number.
Okay. Is that a motion? Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Rob. Um all in favor? Thank you very much.
Um, I'm gonna try to go on provide updates.
Sure, is that uh that's fine. Sarah. All right, good.
Uh this morning, uh Mayor Bell had a very good suggestion. Now, we're gonna have a lot of folks from uh the community here, whether it's business owners, residents. Uh we're gonna be able to express concerns and share things that we're probably not aware of, or things that we could have uh uh done better. But also, the mayor's interest was uh can we get together in one location, a list of all the resources? So regardless of what people's situation is, they have one stop shopping. Uh so I went went across the hallway to the communications division. And uh they were able to let me know that Orange County at this point did not yet have something completely uh pulled together. There was a three o'clock countywide meeting today uh where the number one, the number one focus was, I think, every one of the units. Carboro, Chapel Hill, Orange County, and thanks to Mayor Bell this morning, Hillsborough, who'd already made that request. And everybody's going, there's some confusion. There's different information going out. So the the uh the county communications director was listed as the point. And given a priority to produce this information, to cooperate with the communications departments from the other municipalities. To get this information out as soon as possible. So there is not yet a clearinghouse. One of the handouts that it was at the board's table, so credit to Matt Efer for going in and doing some random cutting and pacing. There's anybody in the audience who wants to, we got a front and back of some different resources that we know are available. It's not the official yet. Uh but to let people know uh that some of those things are going to be available. I'm gonna walk through some more specifics from some updates this afternoon. Uh this, the county provided a executive summary ten page report on uh Shantao. I'm not gonna go through it except for the last two pages, because I think they have very important information on it that's relative. To what we're talking about today as far as resources. Um and again, this one, the VOAD, that's basically the the volunteer organizations. That are uh working and making themselves available to provide assistance to people all throughout Orange County. Those are listed on there, which is a lot of that information is on that uh handout that we've got. Uh I think one thing that's really important, I'm just gonna go to this very basic timeline. We've got a copy of the timeline up there as well that they've shared. So critical resources that can become available, whether it's small business administration loans. Uh that are like low interest loans that go to businesses. We've got many, you know, some uh very important businesses, small and large. That were affected by the flooding and the damage. They could uh could leverage this. I know that some of them actually met with state representatives at the Eno River Mill yesterday. Uh but in order for that to happen, one of the triggers is there either needs to be a state declaration of disaster. And if that happens, you can see in the timeline, then it then goes to the president to consider presidential disaster. So the timeline will walk you through uh what has to happen before the those SPA. And other types of resources for members of our community can be released. Um so I won't go ahead and read uh read through that, but very important, the damage assessments, the preliminary were completed last week. Yesterday, there was a uh basically onsite. Uh surveys throughout Orange County of all of these different locations to verify the damage assessment numbers. That is a key, where it says planned Tuesday, July fifteenth. That has been conduct, that has been uh determined. The early projections from Orange County emergency management staff is they feel very confident. There's no guarantees that we will end up qualifying for SBA assistance. So now it's just a matter, hopefully, of just days. For this to happen. We don't have any control over that. Um uh so that's the other one. And as far as there's other types of assistance, that we just need to wait on these uh emergency declarations to come through. I'm gonna read a couple key, more than a couple, some key pieces of information that were shared today at at three o'clock. Um yeah, they're pretty confident about the SBA loans coming through. This also can provide assistance to homeowners. There's a hundred and sixty six homeowners in Orange County who've been displaced either permanently or temporarily. Uh they're unsure at this time uh whether or not we're gonna get FEMA assistance. It's again, it's up in the air. Uh whether or not we'll get the federal declaration. Uh one of the things I may be skipping ahead on the numbers. In a normal disaster situation, um a federally declared disaster, what happens is the federal government provides. Like say, for example, this is Hillsborough or other ones, the federal government will provide seventy five percent reimbursement. The state does twenty five percent on that. For those of you who are familiar with disasters, and it hadn't changed since when I was at the coast, you know, almost thirty years ago, sometimes it takes years to get those funds back. And uh in uh western North Carolina, they are experiencing that now, but better better late than never on that. In a situation where if there's not a federally declared disaster, then there's the opportunity for the state. To take the seventy five percent. That would be for the state of North Carolina to determine, and then it would be on the locality to pick up twenty five percent. So those are a couple of different scenarios that can materialize. It's too early for us to know what might happen. But I know that's a a big question of people are having right now. Uh as the mayor mentioned, we're starting to transition countywide to recovery and assistance. Uh the uh DSS, Department of Social Services Director. Uh talked a lot today about a lot of their focus is trying to help low income individuals uh who have been displaced. I think their their threshold was like two hundred percent below a medium household income. Is that the correct?
Two hundred percent of federal uh federal.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Uh they're they are encouraging uh homeowners that are in uh in assistance. And they don't know what to do, or they need resources to call their main number, which is uh nine one nine. Two four five twenty eight hundred. That's the main DSS number, and they'll uh they'll assist them. So uh they're they're trying to get PTAs on how long people are gonna be displaced, so they can figure out how best to assist them. Um they're also DSS, similar to the question the mayor had this morning. They are requesting a complete list of the VOAD agencies, that the volunteer organizations active in disaster recovery. They also want a com- comprehensive list of one stop shopping to be able to provide this information, so they can get it out to people in need. And help coordinate and direct, and uh that's also part of what all the communicators are gonna be working on as a top priority countywide. And again, lots of discussion about all of this information that can assist uh businesses and residents. How to push it out and get it out as soon as it becomes available, whether it's the federal disaster information, small business administration loans. Um. Uh the other local governments were talking about from like Department of Social Services, why actually Department DSS Director was saying. They are not, if they can get federal assistance, that will be wonderful, but they are not planning on it. They are trying to figure out how to fund that uh fund that load. Uh went through that earlier. And also they're uh looking at starting to develop a process for a long term, a long term recovery group. Countywide to address a lot of the uh the needs short and longer term, whether it's economic, business, community, displaced residents. Uh that's the that's the quick overview from this afternoon.
Great. Um thanks, Eric. Um I'd like to ask um. Uh online Kathleen and then Matt, if you have any questions uh for Eric regarding the kind of the big picture of county response, and then we'll go around the table and gear the.
Um sure, um I'll go first. I do have a few questions just on what you um laid out, Eric. And and thank you for the summary. Um the first is on the after action. Um will there be an opportunity for. Some level of coordination on the after action, particularly as it relates to. Um the community input. I know you said the county isn't quite there yet, but. You know, especially in Hillsborough, you know, folks might see opportunities for public engagement, surveys, that sort of thing. But we also know a lot of folks uh with a two seven two seven eight zip code. Uh don't live in the municipal boundaries, and so I want, I I worry about some some duplication of effort and duplication of. Of data, um both qualitative and quantitative. Um but do you know where the county is on on that? And and do you think it will ultimately be a. A coordinated after action um engagement scenario?
I don't have an answer to any of those questions. Pretty much everything that I shared uh was is, I think, all I know about what they're uh what they're doing. And I know that Orange County Emergency Management is also coordinating an after action review. They already started sending out their forms and processes. But that that's all I know. Uh Major Simmons, do you, I'll ask Andy if he or Matt uh know anything else about Commissioner Hughes' questions.
Uh Commissioner Hughes, I'd just be very surprised if it didn't happen that way. Uh we're we're a team right now that's working on our emergency operations plan as an entire county. All municipalities involved. So any after action that occurred between any of our emergency management partners, it'd be highly unlikely that we did not do that together.
Okay, thank you so much. Um Andy, I appreciate that. Um I guess. In addition to the my next question, the other two can kind of dovetail into it as well. Um. Cause I do think they actually involve, one at least involves after action. But the first one um of my next few questions is. Um do we have a sense of when Governor Stein will issue the disaster declaration? Um I I I figure part of that might be um waiting on local governments to tell um needs to his office. But um I was just kind of curious. I'm sure part of it is the preliminary um numbers, um which you've shared from the from the county. Um on on the various damages and whatnot, but do we have a a sense from Governor Stein's office when that might be coming?
The governor has up to thirty days to do it. Um just general conversation from the meetings we've been in. Uh they are hopeful, not predicting that it could be within a few days. So we don't have any direct knowledge. That's that's all we've heard. Andy, do you remember any different? You know, it's.
Okay.
Everybody's just waiting.
Yeah, so I've had communications with um um PJ Conley in the governor's office. Uh I've heard from Will Ray, the stadium as director, and several others um that are in the state government. And yeah, they're expecting it this week. We thought it might even come on Sunday, uh but they need to get the preliminary reports first, so I think it is forthcoming.
Okay, great. And good to know you're in touch with PJ, a good friend of mine. Um I know he's a good dude. Um the other question, and I I guess this would be part of after action. Um Eric, but I know that you've you've said tonight and previously that the flood predictions did not. Even rise to, you know, basically obliterated what we thought would happen with a five hundred year uh flood event. Um I think it's probably on the the level of a thousand year flood event. Um do you see an opportunity for county and state collaboration? Because it seems like uh. Maybe we didn't have all the data we needed to be able to model what could happen in a worst case scenario, and it seems like. Maybe county and and state resources might be needed in order to get, whether it's the GIS mapping or. Or other uh pieces of data for us to be able to do more um disaster related planning?
So uh Commissioner Hughes, this is uh Matt Efer. Um so we did have uh representatives from uh US Geological Survey. Here in town after the event, taking some measurements for new flood maps. Um we had a coordination call on Monday with Central Pines Regional Council to discuss um a regional effort. At um at looking at flood modeling. Um and so we are exploring um updates based on the experience in the storm.
Great, thank you. And I and my last question um related to after action is. Um. Is really regarding the activation of the Emergency Operations Center at the county level. Um my understanding is that the county did not initially activate it earlier in the morning on Sunday. And I'm sure there's various reasons for that. Um but you know, county is also the big coordinating agency on that. So um when did the uh county ultimately uh um activate the EOC and then? um, when did the, uh, county ultimately, uh, um, activate the EOC and then, um, will that be part of our evaluation as well as what you do know about what the county is evaluating at this time?
Yeah, I have a range. So, uh, in our after-action report, we noted, um, that the activation of the county EOC came sometime after noon on Sunday. Um, we had an update call at eleven AM, um, and they had not activated at that point. They were in a monitoring posture. Um, Andy, I think you may have been on a three PM call, um, later in the afternoon. Um, and, uh, you know, we'll cover this in our after-action review, but the, the onset of the event and the magnitude caught all of us by surprise. Um, you know, we left that earlier meeting uh, thinking, oh, a few inches of rain, um, everybody's in a monitoring posture. We'll, we'll look out for the typical low-lying areas. Uh, by six PM, we were having to call in, um, additional staff to handle the, the volume of water. And so it escalated very rapidly. But we'll note that, um, um, for our after-action report as a follow-up item.
Great. Thank you. And that is, um, all I have on this item. Um, I've got a few, um, just things to say afterwards, but they're not questions for the staff.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Kathleen, do you have any questions for, uh, staff?
Um, thank you. Uh, um, some of my questions were addressed by Matt. Um, you know, I know there's been at the cog level. Um, there's been a lot of discussions on the outdatedness of the flood, flood play mapping. Um, I will be following up at the cog level with, with more of those discussions will be, that will be part of our, our next, um, State Council Governments meeting in, uh, in a little bit later in August. Um, but related to the weather reporting, um, with all of the cuts at Weather Service, um, are there any indications that the misalignment of the rainfall predictions in actuality related to those cuts? Is there any kind of insights or is it just simply too early to tell?
Sure. Yeah. We haven't heard anything. I, I, I mean, I don't think we'd be qualified to make that type of assessment.
No worries. Um, it, it's something though, that, um, it's been striking in some of the areas where there's been some issues because of just simple last, lack of, uh, resources at, at the weather predictions. Um, at this point, I really don't have any other questions. Some of the things I'll be following up later. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Evelyn, do you have any follow-up questions for staff?
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. We're done. We've got everything I needed to know, I think. And I'm sure there's more, but I got, it's, it's a good overview and I appreciate what everybody's done.
Thank you. Mike?
Um, I just echo what, uh, Evelyn just mentioned is that, um, the response to everything that happened last week, um, the town staff did a great job and really appreciate all the hard work that they did and everything, um, and then pulling this all together in such a short amount of time too, so we can continue the recovery efforts. So thank you all for, for bringing that to us. Um, in the future, I think, um, you know, once we kind of get through this, this portion of it, um, I would like to revisit, like when we talked about tabletop exercises, what what are we going to add? What are we going to change? Uh, just right now, we're in the midst of it, so I don't think it's appropriate to talk about it right now, but just thinking about the future when we plan for something that, like this again. Um, so, that's all of that. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I have one question. Um, Andy, this one might be for you.
Yes, sir.
The countywide coordination of, um, disaster response, how long of a process is that? And is, is the county engaged, um, Central Pines or the league or consultants?
When you say disaster response, you mean for this particular incident or?
No, the, the, the countywide review that you were mentioning.
Okay, so we, um, our emergency operations plan, um, we started planning for it um, as, as one unit. We originally started at the town of Hillsborough. And then we put our heads together and said, well, multiple people in our jurisdiction need to do it. So we all worked together very well. Why don't we come together, put all our money in a pot and make sure we're all on the same page and, and address it that way? That has been, I would like to say we're almost eighteen months in. Um, because of the amount of time it takes to put it together, then you gotta go through a bidding process. You gotta get qualified companies that are able to do an emergency operations plan. And something as cohesive as we're doing with the other municipalities and the county leading, leading the charge, it's just taken longer than anticipated. Um, we do, it, we were supposed to have the kickoff tomorrow. Um, and our, we're meeting last week. We're having a regular meeting with, uh, our company that's doing it tomorrow. And then the kickoff is now being extended out into August. Um, and that's, part of that process is engaging the community to make sure that, you know, the EOP is what everybody wants, but, uh, I know Eric, Matt and I have discussed this over the past week. It's probably going to be the most in-depth EOP in a while, just based upon timing. Um, it's just a very, very, very long process for the entire county and each municipality involved.
Good to have.
Thank you.
Um, and Eric, go ahead.
Oh, and a follow-up on Commissioner Derr's, uh, suggestion, the, uh, and I don't know whether it would be the contractors or maybe Kirby from the county who can, I, 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 I can raise the question, but I don't know the answer to it. Uh, and there's been a trend in emergency management planning to go towards more of an all-hazards plan versus specific scenarios, but there has to be, to me, some sort of a blend of those to anticipate certain scenarios. And so it'll be interesting to get guidance as we go through this process to answer like, you know, um, uh, how, how do we find that balance?
Man. I'll just add to what Eric said. We just last month went through, um, an all-hazards exercise countywide with, uh, representatives from multiple agencies, meeting to go through a number of different scenarios and do sort of many tabletop exercises. So that is happening, uh, and we are continuing on developing a comprehensive POV.
Great. Thank you. Um, uh, my second question is for Eric, and that is, uh, so we're currently operating under, uh, the state of emergency. What can you tell us about how long you anticipate that will last, uh, before we can retire now?
Good, uh, good question, and I don't know the answer to that. As we are going further through, we need to be able to, uh, get clarity on whether or not we're going to get a state or federal declaration and, and at what point we can go ahead and remove that. We don't want to take the risk now of removing that and then having expenses going forward become ineligible. So that's a question that we're in the process of trying to get an answer to, and it's a good one.
Sounds like it's very wise to figure.
Yeah.
Getting reimbursed for these expenses. Want to be doing important. Um, I, I don't have any other questions, but I'll go ahead and kind of make a, a general statement, um, in lieu of that. Because a, as you can imagine, for the past ten days, um, I've been aware of and involved with and communicated with our, our local delegation, the governor's office, our congresswoman, uh, who lives here in Hillsborough. Um, and, um, I'm very impressed with, um, the level of support that we have received as a town. Um, there has been, um, uh, press coverage, uh, about this, uh, that includes Hillsborough, especially our wastewater treatment plan and brick funding and those things. So there's a heightened sense of awareness of the Hillsborough and kind of our situation in this storm. And, uh, I just want to say that I'm, uh, very happy and with the, the level of interaction from outside elected officials and offices from the state who are truly, um, in tune with what Hillsborough is going through, um, and have offered advice. I have asked a lot of good questions and, um, are basically on call twenty-four seven to help us, uh, figure these things out. So I, I feel like in general, we're in really good hands. Um, and, um, so I've, I've probably asked four or five hundred questions over the past ten days, so I won't ask anymore here, but I just want to let everybody know that, um, Hillsborough is, is highly engaged uh, with Orange County and being, and, um, working all possible angles to be useful to the town, our infrastructure, businesses, residents, um, in the long-term picture of the health. So with that, I will pass it over to Mayor Rorten.
Thank you, Mayor Mark. Um, I don't have any questions. I, um, I say ditto to everything that Mark said. Um, but I do want to say thank you to all of the staff, town of Hillsborough. Um, when we have situations like this, um, everybody kind of, you know, it's all hands on deck in a small town. Um, everybody is, is doing something. And, um, and it's very clear over, you know, the last week, ten days, um, all, many of the things that have been accomplished, so getting that water treatment plant back on, um, you know, doing everything that we need to just to, to function, you know, day-to-day stuff. Um, and that's really in every single, um, you know, staff and employee, um, the town of Hillsborough. So thank you. Also, um, just the, the partnerships and the collaboration that I've seen with other municipalities and the county, obviously, the state is, um, is really nice to see and it's nice to, um, to feel supported from, uh, you know, from our, um, our representatives and our, our colleagues statewide and, and federally too, but um, but y'all done yeoman's work. Um, I hope, you know, you, uh, are, are taking care of, um, yourself, each other. Um, but thank you for, for everything you've done.
Thank you, Rob. And before I kind of open up the floor to any general questions, um, I'll do one more call for, um, to Megan, do you have any remaining questions or comments?
No, not, nothing.
That one, it means last call. Okay. Thank you. I believe Rob, uh, you just spoke, so I think Matt may have something else to ask.
Uh, yeah. Yes, um, not, not a question, just a few, um, different comments. First is, I actually had a really great conversation with Rose Williams at the NC League, um, on Friday, completely unrelated to this, but I definitely relayed my own appreciation for the fact that, um, the insurance scheme that we use through them, how responsive they've been, that they were on-site within just a few days. Um, consider me impressed on that. And so I definitely relayed that. Um, and she certainly, you know, relayed her own, um, concerns about everything that folks, um, have gone through. Um, I also want to echo the staff. I really think y'all are second to none. When I speak to, um, colleagues in other jurisdictions, um, y'all keep us in the loop in almost real time. Um, that definitely helps us as we're talking to, um, constituents. Um, I did a lot of Facebook engagement, um, out there when folks had questions, they were concerned. I relayed those to y'all, um, but then I was able to actually answer a lot of questions, um, and, and not being mayor, I, I didn't have as as much to do in real time, but you know, the public engagement and the information y'all were providing, um, was really good, um, both, you know, before the storm, during the storm and after it. Um, I do want to say, if there was a good time for a storm, uh, or a, or a large event like this to happen, I am glad that it happened at the beginning of the fiscal year, um, rather than at the end of the fiscal year, or, you know, if it was unrelated, if it was unrelated to weather or something like that. Um, but you know, this certainly gives us a lot more flexibility than, you know, if, God forbid, we had a similar event in April, May, June. Um, so at least I'm, I'm praying that, that it happened at the right time for our budget and that we can then plan financially, um, accordingly. Um, I also just want to say how ironic it is, um, that we've had, um, these issues with flooding and whatnot regarding public works because we've had the plans in place um, on the books for a while to, to move that facility to, um, anticipating that one day it would flood. It flooded, flooded during Hurricane um, Fran, um, but it takes time and financing and other things, um, that, that is very time-intensive, very long, um, long-term um, planning that's involved. And so, you know, it, it, it's unfortunate that, um, the scenario we thought could possibly happen would happen before, um, we got all that equipment moved, um, out of the flood plain. I know that was a concern when I first started on the board in twenty-eighteen. Um, the other thing is just, um, you know, earlier today, I know I sent it on, sent it around to the board, um, but Attorney General Jackson did file with nineteen other states, um, a lawsuit, um, with FEMA. Um, some of the, uh, water and sewer infrastructure projects we were planning to use for the brick funding. I know we have got people in the audience, people who were watching at home. Um, that we had that, that infrastructure funding secured to move things like pump stations and other, other things out of the flood plain because we knew they flooded during Hurricane Fran. So my hope is that Attorney General Jackson and the other, and his nineteen other colleagues around the country, um, will be, um, successful in returning those funds um, to, to, to North Carolina and to Hillsborough. Um, because, you know, this is no longer hypothetical that it will happen. This was not a hurricane. It formed on July fourth. It was here on July sixth. Uh, we dealt with the damage and other things, uh, on the sixth and seventh and many days afterwards. And so, um, I just want to put that, um, out there that, and I know Mayor Mark, you've been very good, um, with Chapelboro and others talking about this. Um, but decisions in Washington have real-world consequences down at the local level. And we have constituents and a town, um, government that was highly impacted by this, and though we hadn't begun work on those projects, um, without those funds, we won't be able to prevent this from happening again. And so I just wanted to highlight that, um, as an important, um, an important thing and, and something we need to keep our eye on as that moves through the courts. And that's, that's, those are all the thoughts I have, uh, to share at this moment.
Thank you. Kathleen, anything else?
No, just to echo just the, the, uh, gratitude for the staff and everyone's efforts, the amount of work, the amount of planning and the planning which began a long, long time ago, as, as Commissioner Hughes noted, um, and just years and years of approach of protecting what we have, looking forward to the future and even in this, uh, this situation where we're in, which is disconcerting in so many different ways, yet at the same time, the foresight of our approach to budgeting, of how we do our resource planning, and that goes directly to uh, this effort of our staff, certainly of, of town manager Eric, and just the gratitude. Um, I have to echo that in my conversations across the state, uh, fellow electeds elsewhere are not kept in the loop the way we are, and it does make a huge difference in our ability to respond to questions. So, uh, again, thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Uh, Matt, any final comments, questions to the board before?
Yes, so I'll, I'll introduce this, um, and throw it to you, um, for how you want to proceed. So, um, included in your packet is a, a draft that we're calling the Early After Action Report. Um, as we, we did not have, um, enough time to fully develop the report. Um, and so the sections that have been prepared, and for those of you who are, are in the audience and watching, um, this is available on our website. Um, and so we prepared information on the event timelines and what was sort of happening on the ground during the event, um, leading up to and through, um, the end of our response period. Um, information about how we structured our response, um, for future evaluation. Uh, details on which, which town facilities and assets were damaged and the, um, private property damage, um, that we've been tracking. Um, and then an initial list of, um, follow-up items that we've, uh, identified as a stat for after-action review. Um, and so with that, we'll turn it over to you all and start collecting information. The, um, next step in this is for us to survey, um, the emergency management team, key operational staff, and, uh, public to provide feedback on the response, um, to feed that, to feed into this report. Um, do an analysis of the gaps and findings, um, and, uh, report out on next steps. So once that information is collected and, um, got a chance to analyze it, we will prepare a full draft report and bring it back to the board and public for feedback. So I'll leave it there.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Um, I know that's going to be a, um, kind of a heavy lift. Um, the summary is in our packet for everybody's information. It's about forty-eight pages just on what Matt just described. Um, and that's just the beginning. So, um, thank you for everybody who has, um, taken place in recording that information and participated in the all, the many, many, many meetings over the past ten days where we discussed these things, made decisions, um, um, and look for areas of improvement and, um, completeness. So thank you for that. So with that said, I think what I'd like to do is to open up the floor to you. If you have any questions you would like asked, uh, to ask, I have answered while town staff are here and multiple people of our kind of emergency team are here and who've been working this issue since, uh, Sunday afternoon. So, um, nothing fancy, just come on up, tell us your name and, and ask your question. We'll do our best to answer.
My name is Cassie Chandler and I live on Murray Street. Um, my question is, I guess I better make a statement to make my question. My question is, I guess I better make a statement to make my question make sense. I'm trying to determine how can the town take better care of the Murray Street Park to ensure that the water that is flowing down the creek, the Murray Street Creek, is cleaned constantly so that sediment and sledge and, and it is not even the debris. We clean, we clean the creek for debris, but it's the sediment and the sledge and soil that's building up in there each time it floods over in the Murray Street Park and the water doesn't escape and go through the main pipe that goes under the railroad, it floods and it backs up. So right now, if you come into my backyard, it's just full, it's, it is now just a stopping of soil. The angle of the creek is changing continuously. Trees are now sitting underwater and the creek is falling on my house. I've had to have that removed. This last time, the flooding has completely taken out the lower part of my house. Now I've got to pay probably about fifty thousand dollars to clean that up. And it's, and it is because nothing is happening to ensure the water continues to flow. It needs a backhoe and it's going to have to keep being done at least on a yearly basis. It is not something I think I should be doing. I have talked to your stormwater person coordinator, and I was told that the creek is my responsibility. The way that that sledge is backing up and the soil and other aspects, I can't continue to keep that up and clean. I can do a little cleaning on my own, but I need to know what can be done to continue to make sure the draining of the creek goes all the way through, the pipes large enough and the water can flow all the way out instead of backing up to my yard and my neighbor's yard and then impacting our homes.
Thank you, Cassie. I'm sorry that you had those problems. I see the town manager writing down your question. I wrote down your question. I'm not sure if there's any capacity to answer the questions tonight. Question has been, I mean, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ryan. I'd like to just read something that has several questions in it.
Right, what's your last name?
Williams.
Thank you, Mayor.
And this is on behalf of someone who is over off a riverside on the seventy and had they, they, their whole houses. I mean, the whole first floor is just.
Can you say where on seventy?
Off the riverside.
Yeah. Riverside Drive, yeah, on seventy? Is that in the town limits?
It's outside the town.
So how do you want to proceed? I'm not sure that there's anything we can do anything about because it's not in the town.
So, I mean, I think that the, the lack of resources that people have been aware, made aware of has been difficult for people. And so I would like to, to read this and y'all can do with it whatever you want. Thanks so much for holding this meeting. I'm still very much at the beginning of this unwanted journey. I haven't experienced enough to tell you that much. But one thing the town might consider in the future is to have a small team to check on everyone immediately after a disaster. The people affected by the flooding in my neighborhood were able to get themselves to safety. But if sick or elderly people are affected, they may not be able to help themselves. My neighborhood is good to consider others, and I'm sure no one here has been totally stranded. But in a more intense or larger catastrophe, who's to say? Hillsborough is a small town and we should have the ability to keep our neighbors safe, even if they are not our nearest neighbors. The fire department responds to a fire. The way the climate is changing, we will more than likely have more disasters to deal with, and we should give some consideration to this. On a more personal note, I would have appreciated some direction immediately after the flood. Most of us haven't dealt with something like this and really don't know how to respond. Triangle Muti Aid has been the most supportive and helpful organization. The town should learn from them and be more able to help ourselves. As for what I need personally, I still don't know everything I know. I still don't know everything and I don't know what Hillsborough is able to provide. I know there are more people like me that will have to replace drywall, flooring, insulation, appliances and heating and air conditioning units, furniture and personal items. Some people lost their cars. All needs are similar but varying degree. I think we need to look ahead to becoming more prepared for the various disasters of our future. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We've written down your, that, that comment. Thank you for relaying that for your neighbor and I think the handout that we have, I don't know if you got a copy, that has the list of a lot of resources, but more resources are being gathered and we're becoming aware of them. But your point for your neighbor is, is well-taken. What can the county do or what can the town do, or Chapel Harbor, anybody, for that matter, in Orange County, to check on neighbors when they have been impacted? Thank you. Any other comments, suggestions, questions? Albert, come on up. How are you?
I'm good. How are you? Hi, I'm Oliver Fowler, and I guess I just wanted to see if, you know, maybe you're looking at ways to really tap into the community and have engaged them and, you know, a lot of people need a lot of help, a lot of pairs, and maybe even just broadcasting, sending a message and putting together, you know, community events and organization, cleanup days. You know, there's a lot of people who just show up, if you set up a food truck somewhere and blast out an email, who, you know, would be more than happy to help out. So just see, this is from a communication standpoint, something that y'all can really do to kind of boost the voices of people in need and try to, you know, maybe help with some organization and really tap into the community at its fullest. And so I'll happen.
Great, thank you. Our, our communications director, Catherine Reynolds, here and I'm sure she's taking notes on that as well. Any other questions?
I'm Holly Reed. I, I guess I'm, since we're all expecting to have more of these storms because of what we've done to our climate, I, I'm trying to think through what would have helped our family. We lost a couple of cars, luckily. Not much damage to our house. My, my mom's house had some basement flooding and we're dealing with that. But I, I'm trying to think through the night, it might have, if we had some sort of I don't, why, I want, I want to hear the tone of amber alert. I mean, that's a very important tone to hear, and maybe there's a, a flood alert tone. I, I'm not sure. But something that helps us understand as quickly as anybody can that it's an extraordinary event that is happening with with flooding, obviously, with the warmed air and the climate changes that we've caused. If there's a way that we could put out some sort of signal, wherever a storm starts to slow down and dump a lot of rain, I think it might, might help folks. So that's the kind of thing I'm trying to be practical, thinking about. That was certainly for people lose cars. It's like, oh my goodness, we could have moved our cars. It's so easy. And I guess the town may have benefited from that too. It might have been too late, but obviously the vehicles that it lost also. It's, it's tough when something's movable. Anyway, thank you very much. And I'll echo for everyone listening that we're just so appreciative of our, our town and all that you do.
Thank you, Holly. And I have received four or five additional similar comments about how Orange County alerts could be enhanced to provide not only more accurate but more timely learning information as well, because this has certainly caught everybody out. Okay, anybody else?
Hi, my name is Falka Mettendorf. I just was wondering on the biggest scale, the infrastructure that we have in place, so the reservoir on the West Fork, the intake, the water intake water treatment plant, sewage treatment plant, do we have major damage in those infrastructure parts? Or is it just the pump station that we had impacted and is it the intake that was flooded?
So, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong. So no, no problems with the reservoir. It's an interesting design feature, the piano key where that lets the water overflow is only one of two in the world. And it worked very well and was very efficient. So there's no damage, no issues. We inspected, inspected the reservoir, actually in the heat of the storm. I did, somebody else did. As far as where the intake is at Lake Ben Johnston, when Fran happened, all those pumps got flooded and then they got raised and then we raised them again. So a lot of the infrastructure you see out there, I believe was raised even over the five hundred flood year mark, but there was some damage and some flooding to panels and things and they were able to get those repaired relatively quickly. And I'm going to say it was less than twenty-four hours, maybe even less than twelve, they were able to get water flowing from the intake to the water plant. And they were able to valve off. So the, the big thing from a temporary damage standpoint was the giant million gallon clear well, the big dome that's down there. The water came in and inundated it, put mud in and everything, but they were able to valve that off, stop pumping that water into the system, which is one reason we didn't get any bacteria and issues, which was amazing. We really didn't have that and being able to get Durham to start pumping so quickly. And by having that valve off and shutting the plant down immediately, they were able to minimize the contamination, getting back to the intake to Lake Ben Johnston. They were able to get water flow into the plant, get the plant cleaned out, get the filters cleaned out. I know there's some folks in the audience here who've been on the tour of the water plant and have the feed it. So they were able to get all of that cleaned, rechlorinated, start the bacteria test. Anyway, and to get that going, so that was checked off, but there was no damage to the plant of, of any major, certain, any major amount. Most of it was relatively small things that were capable of repair. So no big dollar amounts at the water facility. Sorry, that was way too long-winded of an answer.
That's important.
Yes.
If there are no other questions, I'm sure we're going to be around here for a little bit. So if you prefer to come and, and ask us questions afterwards, that's fine. I think we'll be here for a little bit. The governor just put out the, this declaration of state emergency, so it is out. So the governor made the declaration of a disaster.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so if there are other questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And move to adjourn.
Thank you, Megan. Seven seconds. Thank you. And Matt and Kathleen, thank you for being on line and safe travels wherever you are.
Thank you for accommodating us. Appreciate it.
Very much so. Thank you.